Good evening, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for July 6, 2023. And at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The commissioners who are present for this evening's meeting are at City Hall. We also have staff from the City Attorney and Clerk's Office as well as the City Planning Department. If you're joining us on Zoom this evening, we can see that you are here. You may observe the meeting, however your ability to be seen on screen and talk will be muted. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, you'll be unmuted and then be able to comment. Please note that we cannot take questions until the public testimony portion. If you have any questions during the meeting, please email cityclerk@meridiancity.org, and they will reply as quickly as possible. With that, we will begin with roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Wheeler?
Present.
Commissioner Lorcher? Commissioner Grace?
Here.
Commissioner Rivera?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
And Commissioner Seal?
Here.
The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. The application for Schumacher Franklin, file number H2023-0008, will be open for the sole purpose of acknowledging their request to withdraw the application. They will be open for that purpose only. So if there's anybody here tonight to testify for that application, we will not be taking testimony on that application. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose name? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda, and we have two items, three items on the consent agenda. We need to approve the minutes of the June 15, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We also have findings of facts and conclusions of law for file number H2023-0022, conditional use permit for Black Box VR. And also filed H2023-0018 for the conditional use permit for Ten Mile Costa Vida. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose name? Motion carries. This time, I'd like to briefly explain the public hearing process. We will open each item individually and begin with the staff report. Staff will report their findings on how the item adheres to our Comprehensive Plan and Unified Development Code. After after staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present the case and respond to staff comments. They will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant has finished, we will open the floor of public testimony. Each person will be called on only once during the public testimony. The clerk will call names individually of those who have signed up in advance to testify. You'll need to state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the commission. If you have previously sent pictures or a presentation for the meeting, it will be displayed on the screen. If you have established that you are speaking on behalf of a larger group like an HOA, where others from that group will allow you to speak on their behalf, you will have 10 minutes. After all those who have signed up in advance have spoken, we will invite any others who may wish to testify. When you're finished, if the commission does not have any questions for you or return to your seat in chambers or remuted on Zoom and no longer have the ability to speak, please remember, we generally do not call people back up. After all testimony has been heard, the applicant will be given another 10 minutes to come back and respond. When the applicant has finished responding to questions and concerns, we will close the public hearing. The commissioners will have the opportunity to discuss and hopefully be able to make final decisions or recommendations to City Council as needed. This time, I'd like to open or open file number H2023-0008. I'll need a motion to accept the withdrawal for that application.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded that we accept the withdrawal of application H2023-0008 for Schumacher Franklin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name? Motion passes. Application is withdrawn. Now, I'd like to open the public hearing for file number H2023-0021 for Driftwood Subdivision, and we will begin with staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The first applications before you tonight are a request for a conditional use permit and a combined preliminary and final plat. This property consists of 9.01 acres of land, its own CC, and it's located at 870 West Eustick Road at the northwest corner of Eustick and Venable Avenue. This property was annexed back in 2007 with the requirement of a development agreement, which was later amended. The existing agreement allows for the development of approximately 60 multifamily units and a minimum of two commercial buildings per the approved conceptual development plan. A certificate of zoning compliance was recently approved for site improvements, including an internal shared access driveway with detached sidewalk and associated landscaping and storm drainage. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed-use community. A conditional use permit is requested for a multifamily residential development on the northern portion of the property, consisting of 57 townhome-style dwelling units on 4.81 acres of land in the CC zoning district. A gross density of 12 units per acre is proposed consistently with the density desired of 6 to 15 units per acre in the MUC designation. The proposed development plan is consistent with the conceptual development plan and associated provisions in the existing development agreement. Access is proposed via a drive aisle from North Venable Avenue, a Collector Street at the east boundary, and North Buckstone Avenue, a local street at the north boundary. Buckstone currently stubs to the north boundary of the site. A multi-use pathway is required to be provided from the east to the west boundary of the site. Excuse me. That is a requirement in the staff report that the applicant requests to have withdrawn, and the Parks Department did agree with that, so disregard that. Compliance with the specific use standards for multifamily residential developments is required, which includes private and common open space and amenities as well as parking. A minimum of 80 square feet of private usable open space is required per unit. A minimum of .46 of an acre of common open space is required. A total of .48 acre is proposed, consisting of two common open space areas with amenities and the street buffer along the Collector Street, Venable Lane. The street buffer isn't allowed to count toward the minimum open space. Therefore, revised open space exhibit that excludes that area should be submitted. Additionally, all multifamily projects over 20 units are required to provide at least one open grassy area integrated into the site design, allowing for general activities by all ages that is a minimum of 5,000 square feet an area. The area is required to increase proportionally as the number of units increase and shall be commensurate with the size of the development as determined by the decision-making body. The open grassy area in both of the open space areas is below that 5,000 square feet an area. Staff is recommending a minimum of 14,250 square feet or .33 acre of common open grassy area is provided commensurate with the size of the development based on 250 square feet per unit. The plan should be revised accordingly prior to the City Council hearing. A minimum of three amenities are required based on the number of units proposed with one from each category. The applicant proposes a clubhouse picnic area with a shade structure and a children's play structure in accord with UDC standards. Based on 13 two-bedroom units and 44 three-bedroom units, a minimum of 164 off-street parking spaces are required, including guest parking, with 57 of those in a covered carport or garage. A total of 194 spaces are proposed with 84 of those covered, which exceeds the minimum standards by 30 spaces. Based on the parking provided, a minimum of eight bicycle parking spaces are required. And those are the details for the amenities. Conceptual building elevations were submitted, as shown, for the townhome-style structures consisting of 15 two-story structures in three and four-unit clusters containing a mix of two- and three-bedroom units with a minimum of 1,250 square feet per unit. Building materials appear to consist of stucco and horizontal siding in two different colors with stone veneer accents. These elevations are generally consistent with those included in the existing development agreement as required. Final design is required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual and will be reviewed for compliance with these standards with the Designer View application. Compliance with the Building Code requirements for separation between structures within the development is also required. A combined preliminary and final plat is proposed to subdivide the property consisting of one residential building lot, two commercial building lots, and one other lot on 9.01 acres of land, as shown. As mentioned, an east-west drive aisle is proposed through the site, which provides access from Venable Avenue at the east boundary of the site. A cross-access easement is required by the development agreement to be granted to the property abutting the southwest property boundary prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for the western commercial pad site or when the adjacent parcel to the west develops, whichever occurs first. The existing irrigation ditch along the southern boundary of the site, adjacent to Eustick Road, is required to be piped with development. Written testimony has been received on this application as follows. A letter was received from Jessica Lords, along with a petition from online from neighbors with 373 signatures in opposition of the proposed development. Some of the reasons stated are as follows. There is already too much traffic congestion in this area. A traffic signal is needed at Eustick and Venable intersection against vehicular connection to the north to Woodburn subdivision for safety reasons. Children in the area and traffic. Concern parking will overflow onto Venable in too many apartments in this area already, etc. Mike Wardle, Brighton Development submitted a response to the staff report. He is in agreement with the staff report, except for the condition requiring a multi-use pathway through the site. As I mentioned previously, the applicant is requesting that provisions related to the pathway be stricken, and those conditions are in your hearing outline. The Parks Department agrees with the applicant's request. Therefore, staff requests the commission strike the aforementioned conditions related to the pathway. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the staff report, and we'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Sonia. The applicant, would you like to come forward?
Mr. Chair, this is John Wardle. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, John.
I will be presenting via Zoom tonight. Mike Wardle is in the audience, just in case there's any questions that come up. I would like to present a presentation, so if I could share my screen.
Mr. Chair, I need to share something here just real quickly. And maybe this has to do with the council. I work for the housing company. This is Nate Wheeler. Our property is actually adjacent to this property to the west. I was noticed, our company was noticed concerning this hearing, or their public hearing that they were going to have. I am a development manager for that company. There is no interest at all in this project or property, but I didn't know if there was anything that I would need to recuse myself from or to step back on this, being that we are, we do a butt just to the west of Cooper Lane. So we do share that property line there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wheeler, yeah, I would recommend that you recuse from participating in this because it would impact your employer potentially in a financial manner. So I think it'd be a cautious approach for you to recuse. And so if you agree with that, my recommendation would be that you, I think what you said so far satisfies the requirement for an announcement or explanation, so you don't have to repeat that. I'd just recommend that you may just go into the executive session room where the council is, and we can call you back when we finish with this item.
Perfect, I'll go ahead and recuse myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Wheeler, appreciate it. We have it to where Mr. Wardle can share a screen?
Just waiting for that, yeah. I will put on the record, John Wardle, Brighton Development, Inc., 2929 West Navigator Drive, Suite 400 Meridian, Idaho, A3642. I'm still not seeing where I can share my screen here yet.
Want to make him a panelist?
Mr. Wardle, if you can choose, upgrade to panelist.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I believe Mr. Wardle, when he accepted panelists, is muted. So if he's speaking, we can't hear him.
How about that? Can you hear me now? Perfect, thank you. Mr. Chair, I appreciate the opportunity to testify and present tonight for the Driftwood CUP and Preliminary Final Plaid Applications. As staff has mentioned tonight, we're talking about 9.01 acres at the intersection of Venable and Eustick. And this is a comparison of the comprehensive plan and the current zoning map. The property is Zone CC. Back in, the property was originally annexed and zoned into the city in 2007. There was a development agreement modification in 2016, and then we did another modification of the development agreement in 2021 that, as staff had indicated, it was a mixed-use project of both residential townhome homes and commercial uses. The application before you tonight is consistent with that approved development agreement modification the council approved back the end of 2021. Like I mentioned, this is the project as known as Driftwood. It also has been called Settlers Square under previous approvals, but for plat purposes, the project is called Driftwood Subdivision. As I mentioned, it was, a previous development agreement was approved by council back in 2021. The applications before you tonight are a conditional use permit for 57 townhomes on 4.81 acres and a preliminary and final plat for four lots on 9.01 acres. I just want to talk briefly about the conditional use permit of the 57 townhomes. The area that is under conditional use permit for your review tonight is the area bounded here in blue. There are 57 townhomes, which are all two-story. Each of these homes will have at least one car garage and two parking stalls in front of those homes. As staff indicated, we have more parking provided than required. The amenities for the project will include a clubhouse, which is shown up here in the upper right corner, which will have a game room, it'll have a management room, also have the ability for delivery of mail and that type of thing there. There will be a tot lot, which is shown just north of the clubhouse. And then we also have another grassy area to the north with a gazebo area and seating area. Staff had mentioned that there was perhaps a deficiency of the grassy areas. We noted that the landscape plan provided was not exactly the same as the site plan, and we can address, and we actually will meet the standards and requirements, and we will resubmit that landscape plan to demonstrate that. We are maintaining, per the CC zone, a 25-foot required buffer on the north and on the west boundaries where there are existing homes. In fact, we just maintain that along the entire perimeter of the property to the north and to the west. We also, as this shows here, the homes around the perimeter are front-loaded with the garages on the front. There'll be grassy areas behind, separation from the existing Woodburn neighborhood. On the interior, these homes are all alley-loaded homes, and those are shown here. So on the perimeter, the green are the front-loaded with the garages in the perimeter, and the blue homes are internal, and those will be alley homes. As mentioned, these are all two-story in nature, very consistent with the other homes that are both single-family and townhomes that have been built in and around the settlers' park area. The preliminary plat and final plat combination is a four-lot subdivision. Lot one is the residential, which relates to the conditional use permit. Lot two is the access drive that provides access for lots one, three, and four out to Venable. And the lots three and four are commercial lots. Under our previous approval, when we were before the city council, these lots are owned by St. Luke's. St. Luke's intends to build a neighborhood-sized clinic at this location. They have not yet submitted their certificate of zoning compliance, but we are told that they will do that at some point. The lots three and four are owned by St. Luke's, and they will bring those applications for construction for it at some point in the future. With our project, we are improving Venable. Venable currently on our side of the road, south of the Woodburn subdivision, is unimproved. There's no sidewalk there. We will be adding sidewalk, we will be adding curb and gutter, storm drainage. We also are adding a turn lane northbound from Venable that would turn into the project to the access drive aisle and making those improvements north and south, so that that area of road or that portion of road, which has been without sidewalks, will be completed with this project. As mentioned, the only, we concur with the entire staff report, with the exception of that comment on the public access. We've already resolved that with staff and with the Parks Department. So as staff noted, these would be the conditions that we would ask be stricken from the conditions of approval for you tonight. So in conclusion, we respectfully request that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the conditional use permit and recommend to approve to the City Council the preliminary and final plat of Driftwood Subdivision with the noted deletion of those conditions for that public access that was in the staff report. And with that, I stand for any questions that you might have tonight.
Thank you very much, and I'll start out with a question of why are we eliminating the multi-use pathway?
Mr. Chair, that's, it's a good question. If I may, if I can just go to another slide here really quickly. Actually, I'll go to this one. If you looked at this exhibit here, there currently is no public pathway in this quarter. There are sections, there are connections, there's one up by settlers that comes a little distance, and there's some connections there. There's a sidewalk coming through here. There's actually a condition that was placed as a sidewalk in front of the future apartments next door to us. We will provide sidewalk and pathway connections through there, but the requirement for a public access easement really isn't necessary because there are already sidewalks throughout the entire area, which are of public use. One of the things that we can do is make a pathway or make a sidewalk that would connect. Back up one slide here. You can see that we have sidewalks on both sides of our drive aisle. There's a possibility that when the commercial project comes through, that they should or would put in a sidewalk here to make a connection over. But there really doesn't seem to make any sense to put a public use easement over a pathway system that is not part of a cohesive plan for the city. As you can see here as well, there are a number of sidewalk and pathway connections to and through, and there will continue to be. So there's not a deficit of access. It's just a, I think it was the Parks Department was looking at this, wanting to ensure that there was a sidewalk through. And of course, there are sidewalks through. You have Eustick, which is a sidewalk system. All these neighborhoods have sidewalks over. We will have sidewalks as well. So we just asked that condition be removed.
Okay, thank you for the explanation on that.
Mr. Chair, question for the applicant. Looking at that display, sorry.
Do you want me to go back to that one?
Go right back to where you were.
You bet.
Specifically about Cooper Lane, I believe it is. Yes, is there planned to be, I'm assuming that's going to connect down to Eustick from that stub. Is that accurate? And if so, is there planning, planned to be some sort of crosswalk across Cooper Lane connecting the Woodrose Apartments and the Driftwood Subdivision?
Maybe I can go to this slide. I believe this is the most current Woodrose site plan. You can see here that Cooper Lane will make a driveway access to Eustick. I think the road across the street is called Blairmore. I could be wrong on that, but I think it's either Blairmore or Blameore. It does not exist right now, but Cooper Lane and this Blameore will align. They will make a sidewalk connection down to Eustick. But at this point in time, I do not believe that there are any plans by the Highway District to require a crosswalk over Eustick at that location. I can't speak to their conditions or approvals other than this is what we found in the site plan for that project. I will note, and staff made this comment as well, that there was a requirement for a cross-access to the commercial piece. You can kind of see where my hand is right here, that 95-foot. We have a driveway access that will go over and connect, that's not the right one, but a cross-access here from our commercial site to that connection with the Woodrose Apartments.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Mr. McCann has a clarification for the planners. Mr. Wardle described the possibility of that sidewalk extension in the south, the southwest corner of the commercial parcel that that might be done by the, when the commercial, when the St. Luke's project develops. I'm not sure that the city can require that as part of a certificate of zoning compliance. So I'm asking the planners to clarify that. But if they can't, would the commission want to consider a condition tonight? Because I'm not sure we can require that with the CCC.
Mr. Chair, Kurt, was that a, were you talking about vehicular access or pedestrian?
A pedestrian. If I understood Mr. Wardle's comments correctly, he talked about there would be the possibility of a sidewalk connection. If you look at the, it's on the screen now, where the sidewalk terminates on the west, toward the west part of the site, of the site where the cursor is located, there would be a sidewalk connection from that point down to Woodrose Apartments. And he indicated that could be accomplished when St. Luke's develops. But if St. Luke's only requires a CCC for its project, I'm not sure we can condition it as part of a CCC process. And so my question for the planning staff is, should the commission consider a condition tonight?
That's a short answer. You're absolutely correct, thank you.
Bring that out, I appreciate that. Good guidance.
Mr. Chair, this is John Wardle. If I can just respond to that, that we are agreeable and we can work with St. Luke's to ensure that that sidewalk comes across into a location that makes sense in alignment with what Woodrose would have on that side. Our biggest concern was the requirement for the public use easement, not for the sidewalk and connectivity itself. But we will agree to a condition that says that a sidewalk make a connection over to the Cooper Lane, Woodrose subdivision on the boundary of the commercial site.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sonia, go ahead.
If I may clarify, the reason for the public use easement was so that the public can use it. This site does not have a public street through it, and so it is private property for those that might be using the walkway. So that's the reason for it.
Thank you for that clarification. That makes a little bit more sense for me. And the reason I asked on the, on the multi-use pathway is I'm an avid bike rider myself, so as I biked in other towns and cities, there's generally a more cohesive plan for things like that, where you don't have to guess where you need to go or through a parking lot or anything like that. So when we miss the mark on some things like that, then I just want to make sure it's on the public record that we have a discussion about it, because we, not that this piece of property necessarily has done that, just kind of as it's been piecemealed together. And as John's pointed out, there is no real cohesive plan for that. So it's difficult to have, you know, ridership in this area right here as it's being developed. So just want to make sure that we're a little bit more aware of that as we move forward. Commissioners?
Yeah. So question for the applicant around the open space area, and also maybe for staff, if I'm misunderstanding something. So my reading of the staff report sounds to me like this is not just, this, this site plan is not just short, but it's significantly shorter than the open space. Looks like the staff is recommending a minimum of 14,000 square feet or just over that. And neither of the two lots appear to come close to that. Am I reading that correctly? And if so, could, you know, just applicant comments on how that's what the plan is to resolve that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Smith. The overall common open- The the overall common open space um actually exceeds the minimum standard by just a little bit, but um, the specifications for that is where they're off. They're required to provide a minimum five thousand square foot open grassy area, and as proposed, it's it's below that in both of their common open space areas. Um, I did recommend that a minimum of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of open grassy area be provided overall. Um, that could be split up in a couple areas, but uh, at least one area should be a minimum of five thousand thirty. So I'm not sure how they get there, that's up to them to figure out how to get there, they may need to um reconfigure some things.
Mr. Chairman, the other Wardle would like to interject for a moment, uh, my name is Mike Wardle, uh, Brighton Corporation, uh, Director of Planning, twenty-nine, twenty-nine West Navigator in Meridian. We've already covered this internally, uh, but the area to on the north uh side of the property that uh that Red outlined area can be brought up to standard with a three-foot shift in the units just to the west, and there's sufficient room to do that, so we will be bringing those to standard. Okay, thank you.
I'll ask the next question, so um there there was information in the in the public record as far as a crosswalk across Eustick. Need to phrase this correctly, so, and I know that work's been done to try to um bring A C H D in to do that, so um there's there's a lot of public feedback about, you know, signalizing that that intersection. And we do have a lot of multifamily that's coming in um on Venable as it crosses the street as well, so. What, I I guess from the applicant's perspective, what is what is your feeling on where A C H D is at with providing that, and has trust already been set up and um on the four corners to provide for it?
Um, Mr. Chair, um we we have been in conversations with A C H D about uh that intersection at Eustick and Venable. What is still not known at this point in time is the timing of when that would occur. It it is interesting until recently that intersection had been considered to be a uh a roundabout location. And uh with our staff report, uh, they actually had made a a change with the project to the south and the other corner, but then with this project, they made a formal recommendation that that roundabout be removed from that and that the signal uh be adopted and proceed with that. We've asked A C H D what their timing is for that. They have not told us as of yet, um, but my expectation is that uh with the amount of interest now um and comments that have been made that uh A C H D uh can prioritize that, it it is, it would be within their future uh integrated uh work program, um, but as it stands right now, uh, that timing has not been set, so. Um, we, like I mentioned, uh, up until this point, the our side of Venable has been unimproved. Um, we will be uh making those improvements and finishing out Venable, so it is a complete finished road going down to Eustick. Um, but A C H D at some point in the future would be the one that would install and complete that signalization of the intersection, and nobody likes to hear this, but when they deem it's warranted.
Okay. Thank you for the the information on that, I just, you know, again, it's y- you're part of a collective of things that are going in in that area, so.
Yes.
It is getting it's gonna get pretty crowded there for sure, so a lot of multifamily going in um in that area. Um, you know, close to the park as well, so just a lot of traffic. Uh, thank you for the explanation on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Wardle, this is Commissioner Grace. Uh, I don't know if Ms. Lords is here or plans to testify tonight, but in the event that she might not be, can you just describe maybe what conversations you've had with neighbors, how that neighborhood meeting went, and if, you know, any any concessions that maybe we don't know about occurred, or just just how those conversations have gone?
Uh, you bet, uh, Commissioner or Mr. Chair, Commissioner Grace. Um, I mean, the neighborhood process has not been short by any means, we actually started out the hearing process back in uh two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, in fact, we had a neighborhood meeting at that point in time prior to the development agreement to be modified, which anticipated fifty-seven townhomes. Um, we also had a neighborhood meeting on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and we had a second neighborhood meeting on March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. I I will note that at that March twenty-third meeting, um, Ms. Lords asked if we would um postpone it. Uh, we'd actually already noticed that meeting, uh, but we told them that we would be more than willing to uh schedule another meeting with the association after that, should they want to. Um, we told them we would be happy to do it anytime uh before April seventh, when we were anticipating to submit. And uh we followed up with them, asking them if they wanted to have another H O A meeting. And uh we finally got a response back from Jessica on April eighth stating that uh they did not seem interested in wanting to have another meeting at this time, and they would just submit their comments to the city. And until those comments hit the record as of today, uh, those, um, that petition that was submitted had not been provided to us. I I will say that their comments have been consistent, which were you know, what what's gonna happen at Venable and Eustick? And that roundabout, so like I mentioned, has gone away, and A C H D's indicated that a signal will occur there. They were all so very much concerned about uh improvements on Venable, which we are going to take care of. And and finally, it was the connection to Buckstone, which they um, you know, didn't feel like or want to have the connection to us. I will state that the Buckstone Road has been there pre-two thousand and six, so it's not a new connection to it uh with the other projects that had come through the annexation and zoning. Um, and A C H G, this is a con- or a condition which has been consistent of maintaining that connection to Buckstone. Um, there's comments that have been made by the neighbors that traffic will flow from our project through them. Um, if there's traffic flowing through, I I guess I would counter that would be from Woodburn through us out to Venable, or it would just be very ancillary from neighbor to neighbor um through. Um, so those are the concerns that have been made to us. Um, you know, there's other other comments made about the impact of rentals and, you know, uh upon neighborhoods, and I you know, that's a whole different discussion, but uh these would be the key issues that were raised were uh what's gonna happen to Eustick and Venable. Um, improvements to Venable itself and uh Buckstone, the connection into our project, which is existed since the very first Woodburn project had been approved pre-two thousand and six. So, Mr. Grace, those are the uh, those are the items that uh through those neighborhood meetings, which had been a consistent theme going all the way back to twenty-twenty-one. Uh, those are the same comments that we've heard each time we've had a meeting.
Okay, thank you, I and I can, obviously, I I'm reading through the materials that were submitted, but but that additional context is helpful, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions? Permission? No? Do we have anybody signed up?
Mr. Chair, we do not.
Anybody in chambers like to come up and testify on this application, so just raise your hand. Sir, come on up. Oh, wait till you get up the microphone, we'll need your, we'll need your name and address for the record in the form.
I live at nine-five-two West Anton. Okay, Patrick McCabe. I live at nine-five-two West Anton Drive. Reading, I know.
Thank you, sir.
And I have the same concern that was brought up by others, and that is the traffic. Um, I think, you know, you could knock on somebody's window that's been waiting at that intersection for ten minutes and say, but there's a sidewalk over here, and I don't think they'd care much. Um, I'm also concerned that, you know, the speed limit's forty, which means forty-five on most roads, and let's be honest, so we're gonna see a lot of fatalities. People start to lose interest in or, you know, uh, they get impatient, and so it's gonna be bad, and you have traffic already, which those are on that south side, they're all developed but not rented. So we've not even seen the impact of that quite yet. If the few cars coming across is very difficult. Even tonight, coming down to this meeting, you're sitting there for five to seven minutes, and I was lucky enough to miss the end of a baseball game, which that adds tremendously to it as well. I I think in this development, they're gonna have a hard time even getting on Venable. I mean, you're gonna have to leave stopgaps or put, you know, painted lines like, don't block the intersection. It is a very bad intersection, and it's only gonna get worse. Even if you had the connection to the Buckstone, you know, those people aren't gonna go way out through these neighborhoods, rolling neighborhoods to get out, you know, they need to get out on Eustick, so. I think, uh, you know, responsible development would be get the light in and then move on with some development like this, and and that's um, you know, adequate development. Um, you know, I don't, the sidewalk, I don't think people really miss that, there's a sidewalk on the other side, I don't think that's been a a big issue in in our community. Um, so I I, the last, I looked up online and I wish I'd have been able to print it out. Um, but um from A C H D, they had reviewed that and had no intention of putting a light in there, so that was the last I saw in an email, and it was online, you know, that I could get to it. Um, anyways, uh, I think that's the big issue there, until we get a light. Single-family homes could probably tolerate that, but I don't think we can tolerate these basically apartments in that region, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your testimony. Anybody else in chambers want to come up? Um, anybody online, just press the raise hand button? All right, seeing none, no takers, would the applicant like to come back up to the virtual microphone?
Uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, John War- John Wardle, just uh in in summary. Um, we do appreciate the opportunity to, again, be able to bring up this project in front of you, and uh, the concerns that were that were presented in uh on the record that showed up today and and Mr. McCabe as well are are valid. Um, frankly, you know, this, it's a, it's a roadway which has been uh improved over time, Eustick is built out as a five-lane road, and there are there are needs uh adjacent to it. Um, I I think we're finally at a point where A C H D, uh, now that they have realized that the roundabout is never gonna happen here, but a signal will. Uh, we can continue to encourage them to, you know, move forward with that. That is not something that we can control, unfortunately, but based on our conversations with A C H D, uh, they will have to make that determination, we will will continue to ask them that question of when that will occur. And they encourage them to do it sooner than later, but it's not a a matter that we are able to to address on their behalf. Uh, we are um consistent with the development agreement, which was approved by the council back in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we we made a commitment that we would build fifty-seven townhomes, and this is the fifty-seven townhomes are are what is being presented here. Uh, the open space requirements, uh, we can meet. There are some slight adjustments that need to be made as the other Wardle, Mr. Wardle, uh, indicated, and we can do that, and we will present that in the uh preliminary plat, final plat application that goes before council. Uh, just in summary, we we request your approval of the conditional use permit tonight, uh, with the noted uh modifications, the conditions, and your recommendation to counsel uh the approval of the preliminary and final plats. And I stand for any questions you might have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, do we have any final questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Wardle, I will take a motion to close the pub- public hearing for file number H twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-two-one, Driftwood subdivision.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second and to close the public hearing for file number H twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-two-one, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose name. Public hearing is closed. I I can jump in on this one um real quick. Let the rest of you finish it out, but um in this piece is kind of infill. It kind of has that that fill to it, um, where we're, you know, piecing together some of the final pieces, um, you know, of large subdivisions as as this comes into play. Would have liked to seen, especially as things come along the ditch, just a more cohesive plan for this area as far as a pathway. Um, unfortunately, I think we kind of missed the mark on that. Um, and and that, you know, makes it to where we don't, you know, we're gonna there's no logical place to really put that in in this subdivision, so. Um, I'm a little disappointed by A C H D in their the realization that the roundabout is not going to happen there. But they have no imminent plans to um augment that with a with uh with a light at the intersection, so um, there is a, there's a large amount of um properties that are gonna be coming online here, rentals specifically and multifamily, so um, I I think we're probably gonna see some more issues at this at this intersection for sure, so. Unfortunately, the developer has, you know, no sway over A C H D, and neither does the city, so A C H D owns the roads. Um, therefore, they have to make the decision that um it's warranted to put that in, so. Um, at at least they have indicated that what is, that is what's going to go in there, so um, as far as our citizens, I would definitely recommend that you contact A C H D and let them know that's something that's very much needed, so. Um, as soon as you start to see the, you know, the rubber tubes go across the road where they're counting, that's a good sign, so. Um, you can make an impact by doing that, hopefully. Um, as far as the application itself, I actually like I like townhomes, so um at least they're not fourplexes or the three-story buildings that we see in other places, so. You seem to be pretty popular out there, um, I like the fact that the center is alley-loaded, kind of makes a nice livable area out of it without having too many garage farms out there. I I know that they're gonna adjust some of the common area to accommodate that five thousand square foot, but I like where they're placed. And if, you know, we have different places to go where you don't have to walk clear across, you know, all the way across, which isn't that far, but you don't have to go very far to take your kids and be in a grassy area and and uh, you know, enjoy an afternoon. Plus, they have the clubhouse there and some other things, so as far as the application goes, it's it's actually fairly pleasing in the fact that they didn't try to accommodate the entire thing with um, with the townhomes, there is gonna be a commercial element to it, is you know, I think it'll I think it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chair, um, yeah, I I agree, um, especially with your thoughts around pathways. Uh, the connectivity, um, for reference, I personally live just north of Eustick and Meridian, I used to live uh the uh just uh near Eustick and Cole Road. And, or sorry, Eustick and um Cloverdale, apologies. Um, where someone actually recently um was, there was a pedestrian fatality um with someone trying to cross this, the road across Eustick. Um, so I I have uh I I'm under uh no false pretense that, you know, this is becoming an issue, especially around Eustick and pedestrian amenities, pedestrian facilities. And I agree um that A C H D uh I would like to see them do more uh in this area um around, you know, signalizing the intersection, but also providing additional uh pedestrian facilities. Um, like you said, there's, you know, the developer doesn't really have control over that. Um, I will say, you know, I do have the privilege of also um, serving on the Transportation Commission and and chairing the subcommittee that works on the transportation prioritization requests. So I will be emailing um some information to uh staff on the Transportation Commission about this, uh, about looking at uh whether this needs to be um elevated as an issue that the city takes to A C H D. You know, but but knowing that the timelines um around construction of of these facilities. It's it's it is frustrating. I I I empathize with the uh um, the ci- the citizens who have raised concerns, I empathize with those concerns. But I I don't know that, you know, we can hold the uh development hostage to kind of the the whims of of what A C H D um decides in the moment, so. Um, I I do, I I appreciate the uh attend in the the townhome design, I appreciate um what seems to be, you know, relatively um reasonable. Um, like you said, semi-infill, um, I think this is a a good development for the location, it's just the inner connectivity issues uh that are an A C H D issue, and and I'll be kind of trying to see if there's anything that the city, you know, Transportation Commission can do to help um, push that forward, um, but uh, yeah, that's not the fault of the developer, so I I support this. But, you know, I got the.
Anyone else? Mr. Grace?
Mr. Chairman, I probably can't add a whole lot more to that. I, I agree primarily mostly with, with what was stated already. Um, Venables tough. It is, is have it, having a kid play baseball over there. I get it. Um, and this isn't going to make it any easier. But I do like the townhomes. I, I will stress that point. I like the transition. And I do like the commercial piece. I think that a lot of the neighborhood is going to find that a really, a really nice, uh, amenity to have. So, um, again, I don't want to repeat anything, but I'll be supporting it.
Sure, Eric.
Yeah, same here. I agree. I, um, I, I like the townhomes as well. I'm just hoping that ACHD would, um, reconsider once, you know, those, uh, across the way, those apartments and towns get filled and then this project gets up and running and they see, you know, possibly the need for, or to add a lighter, a diesel, you know, a walk through light or something for, to get across to those fields. I would imagine those apartments and, and all the residents that we want to get across, uh, into the basements instead of walking all the way to, to the light on Eustick. But, um, other than that, the project is good. I, I think the, um, you know, they're doing everything to work with staff to, to meet all the requirements and, and including increasing the open areas. So, um, yeah, I, I will be approving this, this application.
Mr. Wartner, anything to add or a motion?
Um, I don't have much to add. All I know is that Eustick's going to be yucky from Wahi Storm to Eagle for the next several highway 16 coming in, even though it's several miles away, it's going to impact everything. And I can see why developers want to continue to infill on Eustick Road because of that. So, um, because it was annexed in 2007 and it was approved for with DA modifications in 2015 and in 2021. It's going to be a mixed use project. And if we don't approve this one, it would come back as something else. So, like everybody else said, but that's a nice.
Then I will take a motion. And whoever's going to do the motion, please, um, review the conditions that are in the bottom part of the written testimony. And if you would like to put in, um, a condition for the path, um, a pathway in the, um, commercial zone in the southwest corner.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give it a shot.
Go ahead.
I move after considering all staff applicant, public testimony. I move to recommend approval to city council, file number H dash 2023 dash zero zero two one is presented in the staff report for the hearing date of July 6th, 2023. With the following modifications, striking the condition related to the pathway per staff's, uh, recommendation and including a condition of requiring a crosswalk over, I think it's Cooper between the Rosewood and Driftwood subdivision.
Uh, for clarification, it's not a crosswalk, just a public pathway.
Just a public pathway. Okay. Yeah. I wasn't sure on that. So I would make that a public pathway across that road. As part of the motion.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Dean. I did click it. It was already on. I turned it off. For clarification, if, if you're requiring a public pathway connection, it does need to be in a public easement. Otherwise it is a private pathway. And it's a pathway stub to the west boundary. It won't cross Cooper.
Essentially just to, we would ask for a private pathway to be included on the southwest corner. Okay.
That's, so I would amend the motion to strike the portion about the crosswalk and the public pathway. And, um, include every, a condition to require a private pathway across that street. Is that accurate?
Don't, not on the street, just to the southwest corner.
Okay. Not on the street to the southwest corner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to recommend approval for file number H 2023 dash zero zero two one Driftwood subdivision with the aforementioned modifications. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose name. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'd like to open file number H 2023 dash zero zero two six for the Milano animal care facility and we will begin with staff report. Oh, that's right. And, and Commissioner Wheeler can come back. Thank you.
You guys hear me? Okay.
Yep, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So tonight we are here for a CUP, um, request for the development of an animal care facility offering general practices such as examinations, wellness visits, surgery, dental and x-ray procedures on point seven five acres within a 3,100 square foot building in the L O zoning district. Compliance with the specific use standards for animal care facilities is required, which includes a provision that all animals should be indoors at all time, except when being exercised. At such times, animals shall be under the supervision and direct control of the caretaker. The applicant is proposing to install two wooden privacy fenced areas, which are located on the north and west side of the building. These areas will be used to walk animals while in the hospital care and a safe environment and to prevent escape or injury to the animals. Access is proposed via a drive out from North Cortona Way, which is a local street. The drive out will connect to the existing commercial drive aisle that has an access point to West Milan Drive, which is a residential collector. The applicant will be required to construct the entire length and width of the two-way drive out along the southern property prior to occupancy. The area that is labeled future parking on the site plan has not been approved as part of the CUP process and vehicles should not park in this area. The applicant will be required to submit a detailed parking plan to be reviewed and approved per the standard set forth in the UDC prior to use. The, the applicant has proposed sufficient parking that exceeds the minimum requirement. There is existing landscape and adjacent to North Cortona Way and along the northern property bounder. The developer will be required to protect this existing landscape and during construction. Coordination with Republic Services for the appropriate size and location of the proposed trash enclosure is required. The city is requiring that the trash enclosure as proposed be relocated to an area away from the residential development. The business hours of operation within the LO and CN districts are limited from six AM to 10 PM. The hours proposed to operate the business are from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday and eight AM to 12 PM on Saturdays. These hours are well within the, um, the hours of operation required by the UDC. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the hospital. The building materials appear to consist of hardy board, synthetic stone and a shingle roof. Final design is required to comply with the design standards in the architectural standards manual and will be reviewed for compliance with the design review application. There was no written testimony received for this project. Therefore, staff has recommended approval of the CUP per the provisions in the staff report. At this time, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come forward? Good evening, sir. Just need your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Mr. Chair, Dan Lardy, Levin Associates, 1324 First Street South, uh, Nampa, Idaho. Just waiting for a PowerPoint.
No problem. Technology is great when it works, isn't it?
It is. Not that, not that I really can improve on Linda's, uh, testemoning or her staff report, uh, but, uh, it's pretty straightforward, I think, uh, on this one, luckily. Sometimes I get the easy ones. Remember my control. Okay. I want to say thanks to staff. It's nice to see them again. Uh, they've been a pleasure to work with. Uh, this isn't allowed use in the L O zone, uh, via the CUP process, which is why we're here. Just, uh, just so you know, this is the location of it. If you're not familiar with the location, we're just about two tenths mile north of, uh, McMillan Road. Walmart is across the street. That's that big white building there. And I'll, going to bore you with this zoning map. We're in the upper left or the, excuse me, the upper right corner here in this L O zone next to this residential zone and surrounded by the, the commercial zone to the south. Or I should say we're L O to our south, but our immediate south, but across Milano Drive is commercial. And just so location wise, otherwise, uh, right now it's been developed out as, uh, this is a small tox clinic. This is, uh, St. Luke's and this is 10 Mile Smile. So down at its office. And I'm, I really don't want to, I really don't want to repeat a bunch of stuff. So, uh, again, 3,100 square foot clinic. Uh, it's a small parking lot. It's got, uh, four, or excuse me, 14 total stalls. It's, uh, we're only required to have six, so we exceed the standard there. The possible expansion of the parking in the future is in, let's see if I can get this mouse. Lost the mouse. There it is. In this area, as, as mentioned, we know it's not approved with this, with this application. It's only for future expansion. Uh, paved access to Cortana. Or down to the south. There it is. And a picture of the site. So this is a little dated site. It was taken back in 2009, but it is representative of what's there now. And it's looking west from Cortana. There's landscape on, there's a landscape that they were talking about and you could see that from the aerial, but it, this little bit closer, it's a little more mature now. Just a re-quote, I'm not going to run through this. This, again, our proposed opera hours of operation are Monday through Friday, seven to six, Saturday, eight to 10. Right to eight to noon. Sorry. I better be careful. Eight to noon. So landscape buffer again is showing there. Uh, we are in agreement with staff report. Uh, we'll work with staff to move to relocate the trash enclosure. What's up? Close of areas, the two fenced areas that were mentioned in the staff report for the, for the fenced in enclosures. Uh, one is an ISO, an isolation area for pets that need to be isolated that are under treatment. And the other one is to, for all other pets to relieve themselves or to take lab samples as needed. And then, uh, the last, this, this one here is just a, an idea of what the, what the site could look like, propose similar finishes, downward lighting, uh, provided. And then overall the site, oops, uh, it's next to the end. Sorry, guys. There you, so again, future turf, future parking is going to be turfed over in this phase. Uh, and there, this landscaping plan that meets the UDC requirements. And after that, gotta get, gotta get the pets on there, right? Uh, we look forward to your approval. Uh, thank you. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Missus, we have any questions for the applicant or staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Just a question to clarify that they're even under direct, uh, control of, of staff. There's no location outdoors for animals to, to kind of like, there's no intention to linger for a specific amount, a, a significant amount of time for multiple animals, just from a standpoint of concerns about animals, you know, being outdoors and barking or, you know, being, you know, together, you know, yeah, for a significant period of time for noise concerns.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Smith, uh, no, not out, not outdoors, supposed to be under direct control.
Thank you very much.
A quick question. It's a pretty small facility, but I'll still ask, there's no, will there be any boarding going on outside of just, um, specific care?
Mr. Chair, so as I understand, it's only specific care and the only time there'll be anybody staying overnight as far as pets go, it, it would be under surgery or long, maybe short-term recovery time.
Thank you. Mr. Grace?
Mr. Chair, could, I was wondering if, could you put up the map again? I'm just trying to get a sense of where the, where the area may be, maybe the next one, slide five.
Does that one, does that one work for you?
Well, I, it, my question is where, I'm trying to get a sense of where the area in which the animals would be outside is looking. Is it up against the residential area or is it more on the street or?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Grace, uh, as you can see, well, I don't know if you can quite see the, so the pink, the pink is the building itself. Residential area is to the north and the fenced areas. Let me roll those down. These are the two areas that the, that the pets would be outdoors uh, under, under direct control and there are fenced privacy areas. They're up against the building. So it's on the north and the west side of the building.
Okay. And follow up, what, can you remind me the, the height of the fences there?
It's a six foot fence.
Okay. And then, like you said, sir, the, there's no plans for them to be there for long periods of time. It's simply during the treatment or like you said, if they had surgery or something, they might have to spend the night for medical reasons or.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Grace, that's correct.
Correct. And what kind of, of the, maybe your household cats and dogs, is it possible other types of animals are going to be there too?
So my understanding is it's all small pets.
Okay. Oh, no horses.
I, I'm not, I'm not an expert in that field. I'm not sure what, what the veterinarian has in mind, but I was informed that it was all small pets.
Okay. Thank you.
Missus? I make this quick. Is there anybody in chambers that would like to testify? Yes, sir. All right. If you can go ahead and take your seat and we'll have you coming back up in a minute. Sir, come on up.
Evening, Commissioner. For the record, Dave Yorgison, address 14254 West Battenburg Drive Boise. I am the owner of the lots to the west and to the south. We support this project. I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner? Appreciate you coming in and letting us know that. So that makes, uh, our decision a lot easier sometimes to hear, um, people surrounding that are in favor or not. Thank you very much.
You, you're welcome. I was not able to attend the neighborhood meeting, but there, uh, there've been a good, good, um, uh, I think it'd be a good addition to the area. So we support. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have a Danielle Berry also online.
Okay. Danielle, um, go ahead and give us your name and address and the floor is yours.
Yes. So my name is Danielle Berry. I work for Blue Frog Construction and have been working with Dan, uh, closely on this project. My address is 1775 Hall Spencer Road, Edgemore, South Carolina. Um, Blue Frog is actually located in Swanee, Georgia, and we have partnered with the veterinarian on this project. Um, you know, to kind of make his dream of owning his own practice to come true. Um, and I just wanted to be here for support. I could actually not be in Idaho this evening, so I am attending remotely. Um, but we are the ones who are actually going to be doing the architectural plans, um, the, uh, design and then, um, helping the client uh, with the construction piece as well. Um, likely will contract that out to a, a local contractor who is there in the area. But I am just here as support to answer any questions anyone might have. Um, and just to speak to the fenced yards. Um, I, I do know really the, those areas are really just to walk a dog to use the bathroom. Um, should they need to collect a urine sample, um, there are no outdoor cages or runs for them to stay. So, the only reason they would really have an animal overnight in the facility would be for surgery recovery. It could be a late day surgery and they just were not awake enough to go home or they might be there for multi-day treatments. Um, that can't be carried out by the owner at their home. So, um, I'm, I'm here for questions if anybody has any for me. Uh, but just very excited to, uh, see this move forward.
Great. Thank you very much. Missus, any questions? Right. Uh, is there anybody else in chambers that would like to testify? Sir, go ahead and come on up. Good evening. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Ashua Smith, uh, two, four, six, four, North Lock.
Ashua Smith, two, four, six, four, North Loch Ness Way. I'm the veterinarian. So your concerns about the fenced in areas will be one dog out there at a time with a technician with a leash around the, slip lead around their necks. One in there at a time in and out. It's going to be ninety five percent small dogs and cats, you know, no, no horses to, you know, too much traffic around that area, but if someone brings a cat. We'll see it, but that's not the intention of the facility. It's for small animals. Yeah.
Thank you. Anything? No. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else in chambers wanting to come up? No, I've seen one more number online. If you want to testify, just raise your hand. All right. Nobody else wants to come up with the applicant like to add anything? You have ten minutes to do so, so. It's, it's your, your time.
Mr. Commissioner, no, I just look forward to your approval and I appreciate your time.
Great.
Oh, I guess I'll stand for any questions if you guys have any more.
Misses, any questions? None at all? Thank you very much. All right. And with that, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing for file number H twenty twenty three dash zero, zero, two, six for Milano Animal Care Facility.
So second.
Moved in second into close the public hearing for file number H twenty twenty three dash zero, zero, two, six. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose name. Public hearing is closed. Good to see stuff like this come through. Looks pretty straightforward to me. Don't see a lot of these, so good to see something like this come in. It's in my neck of the woods and we do have a dog, so we might be frequenting depending on how she behaves. Any comments from our commissioners or? You know, motion is always welcome.
Sure.
Mr. Smith. Yeah, no, I think this is a pretty easy project. My only concern was the extent and time of the outdoor. You know, space, but it seems pretty significantly removed from the, from the residential area, you know, with, with being one animal at a time for short periods of time. I have no issues. It's, it's always great to see. Local, you know, surrounding neighbors at being in support, so. It's really easy, easy approval.
Mr. Chair, oh, excuse me.
Right ahead.
I'll make a motion.
Feel free.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, move the approved file number H dash twenty twenty three dash zero, zero, two, six. As presented in the staff report for the hearing date of July sixth, twenty twenty three for, with no modifications.
Have a second, second. And moved in seconded to approve file number H twenty twenty three dash zero, zero, two, six for Milano Animal Care Facility. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Looks like motion passes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in, people testifying. All right. So next up, I'd like to open public hearing for file number Z O A twenty twenty three dash zero, 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 one for the twenty twenty three UDC text amendment. Bill will give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is the first phase of the D C changes this year. I want to let the commission know that we're going to try to be very ambitious this year with our code changes. So. This is the first of the first round and we have some, hopefully some exciting code changes coming your way in the next. Couple of months or so. Caleb's also spearheading a. And housing subcommittee as well, and he'll bring forward some other changes towards the end of the year as well. So there's a lot going on right now. But the purpose of tonight is to really talk to you about our cleanup items. So as you're aware, every six months or so, staff keeps tab of some code changes. Some nuances that come about, maybe some errors that have occurred. Maybe we've met with a developer and they're like, hey, is there a way we can fix some of these code changes moving forward? We have a spreadsheet. We track that. We make a note of that. And then, of course, I go ahead and get the meeting scheduled. We meet with a focus group that's made up of stakeholders and even citizens. And again, all of the changes that are before you tonight have been vetted through that group and discussed, and we're pretty confident on what we have in front of you tonight. If you had a chance to look at the staff report, you know, we, the table that I'm showing you tonight really kind of explains the purpose of why we're changing the code and how we're changing it. But a lot of these either come from citizens or from staff or even from. Planning and zoning commission or even city council as you guys deliberate on these applications. But for tonight's purposes, I'll kind of highlight some of the higher level changes that I think are more significant to what you guys do. And then. Again, some of this is just cleanup and working with our legal departments, just changing some nuances with the code. So it does align with state statutes. So the first item that you see on the table before you tonight was requested, actually came to us last year. And to be honest with you, I, I missed it. We met with one of the residents and she asked, she wanted to run a daycare out of her home. And when we looked at our code, we realized that the R two zone did not allow for in-home daycare. And, but all other zones did. And we were trying to question ourselves, why did that occur? And this is one of those chains that were like, it makes sense. An R two property usually is a bigger lot. There's more outdoor space. Well, it makes sense to allow that use as well. And so when we originally pre-apped on that. Partake, potential change with the homeowner, I had assured her that we would get this on the books for a change. And so. We finally got there. I assured her that we would get it on the books this time and I did. So I'm going back in time, but making it right now, but. She was excited to see that this was actually added to the list here. And you can see here, except for the R forty zone. Everything else is an A just means it's an accessory use permit or in the home business. So. And the next one, I think the commission has dealt with on pretty regular basis recently was building height. If you recall, there's one by the interstate and there's one over at the village that you guys had acted on. And so certainly we want to encourage more height, more intensity in our city as we continue to grow. We want to make sure that we have larger employers here. So. In certain instances, it does make sense to have taller buildings and. We're going to take this as a step, a stair step approach. So right now we realize this could be broader throughout the city, but it may not make sense in every situation. And so right now, staff is taking a cautious approach and we're saying, okay, let's do this. Along the freeway, along ten mile, those areas for now where you guys continually acted on that. We haven't opened it up to the Eagle Road Court or any of those things yet, but I think that there is a potential for that in the future. But at least just wanted to share with you and you can see here that we said may. So I mean, the applicant may request that and. But again, this is pretty similar to our sign ordinance. You know, they get, a lot of business owners get taller and larger signs when you're around the freeway because it makes sense, the visibility. So. Again, any, any questions or comments on that particular change?
I actually had a question on the, the daycare one since, and. Right along with what you said, they generally are in R two, they're, they're bigger properties, more accommodating for things like this. Will they have the same restrictions that a smaller, same number of, of children and things like that?
Good question, Commissioner. Member of the commission, that is accurate. So they'll be up to, be able to watch up to six children. On their property. So it is the, none of those regulations are changing at this time.
All right. Mr. Chair.
Right.
Bill, so a question I have is on the other part where it comes down to the maximum building height. Yeah, we've. Come across those issues before. Some of the things too are just like, when it came to appearances, are you talking about like, I remember one of, one of the applicants. Had like a shade structure or some sort of like elevated, you know. I would call it like, that's how I said, like a roof or something like this that was on some sort of pylons or some sort of sticks or something like that. That wouldn't be considered, at least the way that you guys understand at this time, as part of that height?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it could. I mean, it depends on the roof design. A lot of times when we look at building height in our code, it says, look at the average. You go to grade, you go up. It's a pitch roof. You go to average. If it's a parapet, you're going to look at the floor plate. Of the structure because the parapet extends above actually the roof line. Many people don't know that, but there's actually. A roof there and then the parapet to screen things. So. My experience with it is we typically would measure from that roof line, not necessarily the parapet.
Okay.
But again, in, in a lot of the ones that I've seen, I haven't seen anything go beyond this, this hundred feet. So that's why I said, we're trying to take. A small approach to it, a very easy approach to it right now and then see how it works over time and see if we want to. Go a little broader and allow that in other areas of the city.
I like it.
Mr. Chairman. Right ahead.
Bill, on that, that, that item, so I think what you said is that they can request it. The authority would be there for them to request it, not necessarily tell them, that's not prescriptive. It just leaves it open ended. Is there any criteria that? What would, would we be given any? Criteria or some parameters as to when we would accept it or when we would deny it or?
So Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so this, if, for example, if this, someone came in with a building. And it wasn't allowed use and they wanted a hundred foot tall and they met this parameter of that seven hundred and fifty feet, it would not require any action from you. It would be done at staff level. Now, the other provision of code up here that we're not changing is if, if it's not, doesn't meet that qualification and they want to go higher, then it's still going to come to you for that conditional use permit. So. Again, that's like I said, it's, it's taking baby steps at this point. Let's try it out, see how it works. But if it does work the way we think it should work, there may be an opportunity where we, some of those things may be taken off your plate and allow that to be outright. Staff level approval for those heightened sections along certain corridors.
Thanks.
Chair.
Right ahead.
Two questions. One, I assume is just a technical correction in. The maximum height limit in the A, there's kind of an orphaned clause where it's a steeple, belfry, couple of chimney. Is that supposed to be like a colon or is it supposed to be a such as? In front of that.
Yeah, mem, Mr. Chairman of the commission, only the underlying items or strike through items are. Are the code changes. Anything else is just already existing in code. So I just want to make that clarification. So none of this is new. It's really this F is the new standard. Everything else is. Already currently in code.
Sure.
All right.
The second question, which is actually more substantive. I don't know if this is the right. Height or if this is short enough, but I'm thinking about, you know, cities that have open air kind of requirements of. Buildings that above a certain height, there's a certain setback requirement, et cetera. And I don't know that a hundred feet is high enough, but you know, as in, in kind of a future proofing sense, is there any consideration about that for, especially if we're starting to see maybe. More developments in corridors where there's, you know. Concerns about, you know, if there are too many developments of, of a certain height above. You know, next to each other without that kind of relief. Are there any open? Air concerns or opens kind of sky, skylight concerns?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we didn't talk about that as a group, UDC focus group, to be honest with you, like to your point, some places do look at that. A lot of times our stance is, is we're going to. Let the building code or the planning code kind of dictate how that, that plays out and how that's designed. So in your. Say, for example, if this were to go into a ten mile area, which is, you know, over the I eighty four, you see it going on now. Those buildings. Are seventy eight, eighty feet tall and you can see there's pretty broad spacing between that. And speaking with the developer of that site, you can see all of that surface parking. Well, they put in the surface parking with, that someday when you're doing infill. They'll take that surface parking and turn that into structured and, and cover, you know, do podium parking. A parking structure. So you could get more intensification and that's what we'll probably see over time in that area. But to your point, a lot of times in the building code, there is a certain separation for buildings when they're over a certain square footage. I don't know exactly what all those are, but I know there is a certain separation. I've seen that in certain instances, for example, the Cincy campus. Over there off of Pine, you'll see some of those large warehouses where there's a sixty foot separation between them. It's not because of a height thing, but it could be potentially. It's really just the mass of those buildings too and what's driving that. So. Again, no, a lot of those things weren't discussed, but I think you bring up a valid point that sometimes when you go taller, you may want to step in. That building as you go up. So it's not all on the same plane. You step it in and you give some vertical relief to, to address some of those concerns that you discussed. In my experience in other cities where we had taller buildings adjacent to shorter, shorter buildings. We actually required a shadow study, believe it or not, because during different seasons, you're going to have a different shadow cast on the lower building. Which could impact somebody's quality of life. But that's something as we progress as a city, something that we need to, to look and think about for sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Next couple of items, I won't get into the details on that. Again, more cleanup items based on, from, on legal. One item that I did on this next page here on page, let's see where we're at, page three. Wanted to bring up the required parking spaces for multifamily. You probably are aware that we've approved a lot of developments, multifamily developments. Over the last couple of years. And what we realized recently is that in our specific use standards, or at least in our parking standards for multifamily, we had a different. Dimensional standard for surface parking than we did for commercial developments. And so after us doing a few of these, we had this noted that we needed to get it corrected because we were. Little deficient on some of our dimensional standards in our multifamily developments. So essentially this particular code change is to allow. Align surface parking to match the commercial standards and not the residential standard. So just wanted to at least just highlight that one for you. So. Basically, carport parking for multifamily projects and, or parking stalls in general is supposed to be ten by twenty. This particular case, we're in a commercial setting, it's nine by nineteen. So we're losing a foot in width and a foot in, in length. To align with the commercial standard. So not a real significant change, but just. We just want to make sure that we're doing things consistently because a lot of those projects are approved with the commercial standards. And not necessarily these residential standards. So we want to make sure that what we're approving does match up with code. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Arts and entertainment facilities, this is one that we, we talked about. And essentially whenever you have these, these types of facilities adjacent. To roadways or even residential districts, there's the potential for tall lighting or nuisance lighting. Our code does address lighting, but there's always, there always may be a case where lighting can't be achieved because of the need of that specific tenant. Or that property owner. And so we wanted to make sure that if, if outdoor lighting is a potential. Element of the design of this, the use that we want to make sure that if they can't meet the lighting standards, that they would have the ability to at least get that vetted through the public hearing process. So that at least the adjacent residences or property owners would be aware of it and they could provide public comment on that. And I'll give you an example is we have a outdoor recreation facility along interstate. And they, they have some lights that interfere with the traveling public that travels down I eighty four. And so. As part of this effort, we're trying to, although we can't solve all the, the complexity behind what that is, what that's creating. This gave us another avenue for that person or someone in the future to come forward and say, hey, we realize you have a code. It still meets X, Y, Z of the code. We just can't comply with this portion of the code. So we can go through the. E-conditional use process and at least get it vetted and people will understand that, you know, we still, we're meeting this section of the code, but not necessarily this second. That was approved through a conditional. I don't know how successful will be. This one has been controversial between city staff and the UDC focus group. It is a definitely a touchy subject. Any questions on that particular change?
Mr. Chair, if I could actually backtrack to kind of one of the legal cleanups, just actually, I think a question probably for Kurt. On the prohibited signs change. Apologies if I'm getting, you know, if I'm over analyzing and getting a little wonky here. But for that change to K, signs for advertising activity that is illegal in Meridian. Does that mean? I'm thinking of the signs that you see when you get closer to Ontario, for example. Does that mean signs advertising activity in Meridian that is illegal in Meridian or activity anywhere that is legal in Meridian? The sense of, you know, if there's. And I, is there any concern about kind of liability regarding like the difference between time, place, manner and, and viewpoint discrimination in terms of, say something like cannabis out of state advertising?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Smith. So this is a topic my colleague Emily Kane worked on. And very insightful. That's exactly the issue we looked at in terms of some first amendment concerns relative to. You know, you're, you gave a good example of some of the advertising that takes place in the valley for. Marijuana operations in Oregon, for example. marijuana operations in Oregon, for example. So this is, this language is intended to address things of that nature. So my colleague, Ms. Kane, who did the research, was confident that this language would withstand legal scrutiny and, and would be enforceable and constitutional. But I would say there's, there's some room for debate there and um, you know, there's some case law uh, at the federal level, Ninth Circuit in particular that deals with this, but uh, the City Attorney's Office reviewed it and is confident this language is uh, defendable and would be helpful for our code enforcement staff.
Chair.
Right.
And is, is that, to, to be clear, is it with the intention to limit things like that or, or, you know, things, the cannabis advertising?
The cannabis advertising be, would be an example of something of that nature. So this is not directed specifically at that industry or that topic, but that would be an example of um, a product or activity that would be covered.
Thank you.
Next item on this, I, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but recently you acted on a loose groove brewery application and I we had provided you commentary during our presentation to you that we would be changing the code for our drinking establishments. Um, and this, here we are. We said we'd be here on the sixth and we're sharing that with you now. So uh, it's currently that type of use is prohibited within next three hundred feet of a school and a church. And so we're making it, aligning it with state code that it's still allowed. Though the way the code reads is you can license that type of facility when it's within three hundred feet, it just needs to be done by city council. And so in this particular case, we're, so we're verifying it, you can still do that as long as either you or the city council approves that use of that conditional use process.
And that basically is what I mean, it doesn't spell it out, but um, as set forth in chapter five of this title means it's got to go through due process.
Yep, you got it.
Okay.
Chair.
Right.
So that's just aligning with state statute. Okay. And I'm assuming drinking establishment is defined somewhere else in the code.
That is correct. We do have that defined in chapter one of the code. Next item again is just rewording or renumbering some of the, some changes for alternative compliance. So although there looks like there's a lot of changes here, it really is no new language, it's just renumbering the section. Uh, the one, the item on this one was the vertically integrated project. Uh, if you recall, we changed those standards to the last code change. And we also added a requirement for private open space for vertically integrated projects. Uh, what we did is we tried to mirror the language that we had in our multifamily standards. And a portion of that code section got added to this section, which doesn't apply. So essentially, staff is removing that verbiage and then aligning it with our alternative compliance section in chapter five of the code. So this is again, another cleanup, just kind of missed it on the, on the first go around, now we're cleaning it up on this realm. And a lot of the last part of these changes are, are aimed to us from legal to just align things with state statute. So it's really, again, more making sure our code aligns with how we operate in Idaho. And then here's where that vertically integrated, as I just mentioned to you, where it gets added to the, the table in our alternative compliance section, making it noted here that it, which code section it is and how you apply for that. And again, if you recall our last code change, we required applications that came forward with alternative compliance or a DA mod with a conditional use permit, it would go move on to city council, they would become the decision-making body. So uh, these last two sections of this cleanup is just to align the findings with the procedural process in chapter five, as you mentioned on the other one. So it's making it clear that, you know, again, the council will sometimes be acting on CUPs now because of the fact that it may be current concurrent with other things. So again, just more administrative items. I had a chance to look at the public record. It looks like we did get some testimony from um, Melissa Bernard, and again, she she was concerned about some of the changes that we had here, but nothing too alarming from staff. I think we're headed down the right path here. As I mentioned to you, this has gone through the UDC focus group. We've met a couple of times discussing this. Everyone feels comfortable with the changes. We think this will make it easier for us to enforce the code, and so I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation. Be happy to answer any other additional questions you may have.
Mr. Chair.
Right ahead.
Um, Bill, I see there under the findings for the CUP's commission, um, it said that there is, uh, let's see, council needs to be added on based on the previous change to the UDC and that it is to be the decision-making body when there is a concurrent, what is, so just help us understand those, those um, abbreviations AZ, RZ, PP, PFP.
Yep, I'm happy to. Mr. Chair members of the commission, so A- AZ is the annexation.
Okay.
RZ is rezone, PP is the plumeri plat, and then you got combined plumeri final plat is what the PFP is. So as you know, uh, you've, 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 most of our applications are concurrent as with all, either annexation or plat. Um, so again, as, as noted, um, we, we made that change. Should, it probably should say MBAs as well, but that's not added to this explanation because we did make that change recently. But again, when you go to the conditional use permit section findings, it doesn't mention council anywhere, where it should, because they do act. They are going to approve this sometime. So it's really, that's why we added council as applicable, because when you go back to that table, it goes decision-making body and it says CC. So really, it's linking that table in chapter five, like I did with the vertically integrated with the alternative compliance. But then this is linking the findings with the table in chapter five or the decision-making body. So again, just more administrative cleanup. Making sure code's aligning with all, all different sections, different chapters in the code.
This is the, the stealing our thunder clause.
Yes, I'm very jealous. I'm kidding, obviously.
Mr. Grace.
So, um, oh, um, I'm just curious, who's on the, who was on the focus group? Is it just members of the staff or is there any public or?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I don't have all the members memorize their names, but there's design professionals. Um, there are some residents that are asked to not everyone participates at every meeting, so I don't want to disclose that we might twenty people and all twenty show up, but we have representation from um, Meridian Development Corporation, which is the Urban Renewal District. We have code enforcement part of that. We have legal team, of course. We have various city departments and then, like I said, design professionals, developers, stakeholders, city council liaison. I mean, there's a broad range of people that are looking at this and participating.
And follow up, I'm guessing that when you change code, there's a notice component to it and the public knows about it and gets to weigh in if they want and all those good things, right?
That is correct. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it's, it's a little different, you know, when we're changing code, it's citywide, it's not parcel specific, so it's you can't just put a public hearing sign, but the clerk does put it in the paper, they send out, put on next door, and then they also do a, a broadcast fax or PSA is what we call public service announcement that goes out to everyone, so they
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Um, I do apologize, I'm probably going to be a little bit stickler on this, admittedly pet issue, but on Kurt, going back to that prohibited signs, um, says in all districts, um, I'm thinking about these kinds of signs that are, are targeted here. Um, I assume the primary target is commercial signs and things like billboards, but does this also cover maybe a sign posted on a residence, on a residential lawn, in a residential window, et cetera? Is that covered in terms of prohibiting the activity? Um, and prohibiting that signage as well?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Smith, so uh, let me preface my, my remarks or my answer, but again, one of my colleagues, Ms. Kane, did the research on, on this particular area, so this is not my area of expertise, but I'm gonna do my best to answer your question. Um, and I think your first comment is accurate. This is, we primarily see this in the context of commercial signage, although we don't you know, we don't discriminate, it depends on type, type of communication or um, signage, but typically this comes up in a commercial context and becomes an issue for our code enforcement staff. Um, so things like billboards, for example, or um, other commercial signage on a, on a building or in a parking lot, things of that nature. Uh, it is not primarily geared toward resident, or you know, just sort of a more residential context, but I'm not sure that we explicitly prohibit that or exclude that either. So I'm just take, I'll take a pause for a second, just quickly, just refresh my own memory by reading through this real quick. Again, I think with, again, with that caution that this is not my area of expertise, but as you mentioned, this, it does pertain to all districts and it does talk about private signs. So I think it would apply to um, to a multitude of uh, uses and districts, so I think it could apply to residential.
Thank you. I don't know if I have a question, but I, I guess I'd say that does raise some concerns in terms of obviously, I, I think the uh, prohibited signs, things like emitting odor or strobing are, are more of a nuisance. And that is more, that is the concern that's brought, but I, I do worry, you know, especially from the context of a hypothetical bad neighbor, um, or if there's a conflict between neighbors um, using code as a weapon. I, I would hate to see code enforcement and, and the city put at, you know, at, at risk or, or also just from a um, First Amendment standpoint, limiting the rights of, of an individual um to use signage in, in a way that um, you know, is tied, at, at least in the current climate, tied kind of closely to a political viewpoint, um, considering things like cannabis, um, board of fashions, et cetera. Um, I, I, I think I just have some concerns there, especially from the residential aspects. I don't know if you again, I, I, understanding that, you know, I I do tend to trust lawyers with the last name Kane, uh, for, you know, and I've worked with Emily Kane on a transportation ordinance issues, uh, and she's a great lawyer. I just, I, I have some personal concerns there and I don't know if you I want to speak to them or if those just, that just lies, um, but yeah, just.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Smith, I have for a couple of thoughts. So um, first, my first thought is I would echo your opinion about Ms. Kane, she's an outstanding attorney and uh, valued colleague, I would agree. I know she's looked at this issue in some detail, my, would be thought number one. Thought number two is your concern relative to neighbor to neighbor disputes and people using city code as a tool against a neighbor. Um, that's certainly a valid concern and it's something we, the city, deal with on a regular basis, and we're fortunate, we have an excellent code enforcement staff that are very uh, expert at what they do and they're mindful of those types of tactics and I think use good judgment in those situations, but your concern is well placed. People, uh, when they get into spats with neighbors, they look for ways to um to, to advance an argument or to maybe a retribution. And so sometimes they will look at things like city, the city municipal code as an opportunity to do that. So I understand your concern there. Uh, with respect to the constitutional concerns, um, you know, we're, the city is quite, and the city attorney's office in particular, quite mindful of the constitutional limitations of what a government entity can and cannot regulate and how ordinance has to be crafted to protect those constitutional rights. So I'm, I'm confident that Ms. Kane has looked at that information and deal with those issues in detail and uh, has put together a thoughtful proposal. So I'm not overly concerned about that, but I certainly understand your concern relative to um, you know, the, the rulings in this area over time from the Supreme Court of the United States and the um, other appellate courts. Um, there's a a tangled web of decisions that is sometimes difficult to decipher and sometimes appears to conflict with one another. So it is a, a bit of a maze. But I know the City Attorney's Office and Ms. Kane in particular is quite mindful of those and uh, putting aside the, the changes we're talking about this evening, uh, I'm not aware that the city's ever been challenged. And just, we've had a sign ordinance in place for many years. Uh, I'm not aware of any um, successful challenge regarding constitutionality up to this point in time. So uh, that doesn't mean we can't have one tomorrow, but I think um, the ordinance has served us well uh, up to this point in time and I think the proposed changes have been well vetted amongst the legal staff. So I, I understand your, your comments and um, the other thing I'll mention, and I'll be quiet for a bit, is um, we have a couple more steps in this process. One is that the commission will consider the proposed changes tonight and have your thoughts and questions and ultimate recommendation to the city council. Step two will be the city council will have the same type of a discussion in a few weeks. And so in the interim, I can relay your questions and concerns to Ms. Kane and have her triple and quadruple check. And then lastly, be, even after the council has that discussion, there'll be a third step, which is the actual um, preparation of the ordinance for consideration and adoption, which will be happening even at another city council meeting. So we still have a few steps left in the process where we can triple and quadruple check some of those issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lord, chair.
Um, I can't speak to all uh, HOAs, but I know with our HOA in regard to signage on personal property, it's very specific of what uses that you can have. For example, in our subdivision, they do allow, allow political signs. They do allow like happy birthday signs and either graduate signs. They do not allow a for rent sign. Uh, they will allow a for sale sign. They, but any other uses uh, to advertise commercially or do anything privately is prohibited. And I would think our subdivision is pretty typical across the city, understanding that a good portion of our city is not in a subdivision. There just needs to be some common sense. Hopefully with the code enforcement and how HOAs are kind of regulating should take care of the majority of any considerations.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Um, yeah, I think I think statutorily, they've captured the political signs with HOAs, so the state legislature has dealt with that. Um, the only thing I would just mention, I think Kurt mentioned it, but it's worth repeating. This is, this mostly appears like it's been in the code. The only thing that's changing are those underlying provisions. So um, the, like to Kurt's point, if it hasn't been a problem this far, doesn't mean it can't be tomorrow, but um, the only one that struck me though, based on your line of, of thinking, um, was the, was M, any roof signs, just it's pretty broad. But I too think very highly of Emily, so if she's done the, the research on it, then I have no reason to question.
Anything else? Do we have anybody signed up to testify? Sorry, I was just gonna move on here and I'm like, well, wait a minute, that's not how this works, is it?
Sure, we do not. There's no one signed up, nor do they have hands raised.
We don't have anybody online. We only have city staff in the audience, so. Unless you have anything else to add with that. Um, I will take a motion to close the public hearing for file number Z O A twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one.
So moved.
Second.
And move in second and to close the public hearing for file number Z O A twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one for the twenty twenty-three UDC text amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close name. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Wheeler.
I'm, I'm looking at this, there are literally signs that emit odor. There are signs that emit odor. I've never, I mean, like, I mean, like Smash Burger does, there are signs emit odor of like good tasty meat to eat, but I'm like, I just saw that there and I was like, it just caught my eye. Like, I couldn't imagine a sign just emitting a unpleasant odor. It's just interesting.
Well, they're not there because it's in our code.
Well done.
Commissioner Lord, you go ahead.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to the city council for file number Z O A twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one as presented the staff report for the hearing date of July sixth, twenty twenty-three, with no modification.
Second.
And move in second and to approve file numbers, recommend approval for uh, file number Z O A twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one. File number Z O A twenty twenty three dash zero 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 one for the twenty twenty three U D C text amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post name. Yep. Motion passes. All right. We will move on to open file number H twenty twenty three dash zero zero two nine for the twenty twenty three comprehensive plan policy update.
Good evening. We're here to talk with to you about some policy updates, which is a comprehensive plan text amendment. Within the comprehensive plan, the policies together are referred to as the implementation section. These include goals, objectives, action items, and each with council priorities that ideally get tied into shorter strategic plan. Budgeting and other decision making processes. Briefly, this is an overview of the presentation. We'll cover some background, the review of the process for the comprehensive plan policies, our recommendation, and the next steps. The city adopted the comprehensive plan in two thousand and nineteen and which includes all of the goals, objectives, and action items. Whereas previously noted, the policies, adoption, however, did not include the priorities for these policies. In September of two thousand and twenty, a new city council adopted an update to the plan, which included those priorities. And it also included whether departments were leader supported and who was responsible. As a refresh, this commission is charged under Idaho statute title sixty seven, chapter five, with owning this plan. Tonight update is tonight's update is more of an operational allocation of resources, but I hope you're all interested. And I'll touch more on that a bit at the end. Since it's been several years since we assigned priorities to the, to the policies, it seemed appropriate to update council on those. Review process started by talking with the directors, having the department's review, provide updates. And then provide an opportunity to ask council for input in any direction they'd like to have. On May second, we presented the review and work status to council. Most of the discussion revolved around policies related to growth priority areas. Council provided direction on these and support to move forward with other staff recommended changes. Council workshop, this punny's only workshop discussion, sorry. The council workshop discussion was helpful, but all those changes to policy that staff discussed with them do require a text amendment, which is why we're here before you tonight. Public hearing process. There are fifty some policies, changes to a text, minor modifications, grammar sixteen with priority modifications, fifteen with the lead modifications. And thirty seven with support modifications. Note that some of those do have changes in multiple categories. Not going to go through all these with you. Hopefully those were easy to understand in the staff report, but we are happy to discuss any that caught your eye in your review.
Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so thank you for that presentation. The two that I am just curious about are. I guess I'll say three dot oh three dot zero two E. And four dot oh five dot zero three D. Seems like most of the other things that have changed from higher, very high have tended to be changed ongoing. Just curious why these two specifically regarding investment in strategic growth areas. And discouraged development outside of established growth areas as well as. Considering public funding to preserve open space, this part of a permanent land trust, why those specifically are lower priority. If there's specific reason or context behind them, just curiosity to.
Commissioners, yeah, that's maybe better. And we actually had the slide because those are kind of the meat, if you will, of some of the conversation that we had with council in May. About these, something that council has discussed sort of off and on since two thousand and twenty, when we had three new council members elected. Is quote unquote, I'm using air quotes because it really isn't anywhere in our code is priority growth areas and some of those concepts of directing growth in some of those areas. So what you see is really some of that direction and discussion we had with council again in May. Some of, and I will paraphrase some of that conversation from May, but some of them. The direction we got was it's sort of taking care of itself to some degree. It's maybe not the issue that it was even a couple of years ago when there was the, the leapfrogging and the pushing out further and further of city limits. And they, they didn't vote, but the general consensus, just for lack of emotion or any other action. Was that the map that they did put together a year and a half ago, maybe that did have some growth boundaries that were. Largely based on sewer sheds and fire response times was adequate enough. Thus, we changed some of those priorities. And again, they think they've, they've basically. Guided and directed that growth without explicitly having to come up with and define where and where not the city shall grow. I don't know if that fully answered your question, but that's essentially what we heard in May.
Right ahead.
Yeah, thanks. That answers my question for that. As for the public support for a permanently interest, is that, was that part of a kind of a similar discussion? Or was that just like the support was found to not necessarily be there? So it's kind of on the back burner or just some.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, so that, that one is another interesting one that has a little bit of a backstory to the, the previous. Community development director was kind of leading the charge on that sort of as a, a pet project under previous administration. And he's gone and, and the last mayor and even just through some of the city surveying. That didn't rise as a top priority to our community. And so that has really been backburnered at this point.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Commissioners. Any other questions, comments, concerns? And we have nobody left in the audience.
There's no one online, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there anything specifically that? Was more troublesome than others as far as reprioritization? I mean, had more input, more robust conversations that, that were part of it?
Mr. Chair, no, the, the process really was planning. I don't view myself as a gatekeeper, so we just sort of said departments, what do you want to talk to council about? What, what, what are your updates on these hot, very high and high priorities? And we'll take them to council for you. Herding cats was at times problematic, but changes to the policies themselves seem to be non-issue. Minus the few that we wanted to talk to council about.
Okay.
Now, that said, you know, we'll have a slide here in a minute, but we are going to be. Working potentially next year on some changes to the text of themselves. Are these policies so right? Do we need to add or move? Make, make other changes. So not just the priorities of these policies, but the policies themselves may, may be a little bit more interesting.
Interesting. Mr. Chair, I will maybe, if you don't mind, just another little peek behind the curtain to some degree. The other thing through this process that I think was interesting for a lot of the staff members that we were trying to get to review and respond on those high and very high. Is, is the city also has a strategic plan. And there's a lot of overlap and there is some confusion even with the operational. Brian kind of mentioned that at the beginning. I mean, the, the, this is very operational and in-house about what department is supposed to be doing what. The strategic plan is, is very much the same. And again, there's some overlap and there's some confusion too with plan as in both names. So like, well, didn't we already do this through the mayor's office? And it's like, no, it's the citywide strategic plan versus a citywide comprehensive plan. Which, when you think about it, makes some sense that there's some overlap. But I think even going into next year and then once we're through with this five-year strategic plan at the city, I've talked to Vincent Kuntz up in the mayor's office. We'll do a better job of coordinating those plans. So the ongoing ones that really are operational maybe aren't so much in the comprehensive plan. And we are very more tactic driven and. The comprehensive plan isn't so grandiose and visionary, still pretty specific about what we're trying to accomplish. But maybe we back off some of those things are more day to day and really differentiate what is strategic and operational. And kind of making those lines a little bit clearer. Again, this is, this is. The comprehensive plan is, is focused on many readers, right? The public development staff commissions, where the strategic plan is, is more inwardly focused for the community benefit still. But most of the community doesn't even know we have a strategic plan. So anyways, I just thought that was interesting as we're talking with the fire departments and some of these others are like, well, we just, we just told the mayor's office what we're doing with that. Like, well, this is a, for a different project, for a different purpose, but related. So anyways, I'll stop.
So could you say that the priorities, e- even though they may be adjusted, the adjustment is more to help. The different departments within the city to help them know where the prior prioritization needs to be within their active duty set. Not necessarily reflection of the, kind of the overarching comprehensive plan as it relates to the public.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. And I don't, I, I don't think I'm under any. Pretense that this is driving their work plans necessarily, but it is a checkpoint. And again, this document, as, as you'll recall, chairman, you know, was vetted through our community. So it should reflect those stakeholders that are our residents, that are our business community. And what they said is important to them for us to do as the city. So there is a lot of overlap and it should all be intertwined and ingrained in, in people's day to days activities. And again, more of a check in, hey, we said this was hot, the community said this should be a high priority three years ago. How are we doing on that? Okay, we're gonna make that lower again for ones that I just mentioned, like looking at like a foothills type of levy to preserve ag land. That was, that was a big topic three, four years ago when it went out to the public. Again, now that opportunity and how we do that gets more convoluted and it's just, and we didn't just make it a lower priority because it's hard. But there really just didn't seem to be any real momentum to do that currently in, in the community. So again, it's a, it's an opportunity to check in. In theory, some of this does drive again work plans, but there's other factors too.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Some, sometimes I ask questions just for my own education, but. I, I'm guessing that there's a requirement somewhere that you have to run these U D C and these comp plan revisions through the, through the P and Z. I'm just wondering what that is. Why are we hearing it? Why do we have to approve?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gray, so the comprehensive plan has to be adopted by, as part of a public hearing process. And your, your, your commission is a recommending body to council for any of those types of applications. So we, we do have to present those to you. I would say, well, this one, and I've said, said it several times, is more an operational thing, that the comprehensive plan is your document, though. State code makes that pretty clear over and over again. So. You know, and I've got a couple of bullets down here, but you know, maybe not so much tonight because this is more of an operational, just priority thing. But if you have any general comments, if you have any questions or there are areas of improvement, those are all things that, you know, we'd like to talk to you more. I don't hear that often. I'm also not before you all that often. But you're always welcome to share those things with, with Bill Parsons team or requests that we have a conversation with you as well.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up and, and just provide a similar answer to what Brian said, but maybe phrase it a little bit different way. There are two changes tonight that would require the planning and zoning commission to recommend something to the city council anyways. Because those are substantive, if you will, text changes. We've chosen to adopt in our comprehensive plan, the lead agencies and the priorities. So by making that choice, state code doesn't require us to do that, but for transparency purposes, we did that. We told the public, here's what we said, you know, here's what you said was important for us to do and who's going to be doing it. So there's some accountability factor. A lot of comprehensive plans don't have that. It's more ambiguous and we can point fingers at, oh, I thought fire was doing it. No, I thought planning was doing it. So if we didn't have that, we could just make these changes and, and work it out between fire and planning about who's doing what. But because we've adopted that as part of our plan, we can't just go and change it. We have to vet that then back through that same process that we adopted and thus you're involved in that, as Brian stated in the local land use planning act. So you have a lot of authority and we rely heavily on you. Now, we do a lot of the work, but we're there to feed us any changes and comments and coordination. So to your question, I think, really on this one, you really don't have a huge role, although we do want you to be comfortable with it and vet it through you. We could have done this administratively if we wouldn't have included some of these things in two thousand and twenty in the actual text of the plan.
No, I like the, I like the fact that you get that additional accountability piece to it. That's great. And no, thank you. I'm glad I asked. I learned something, so.
Chair. Mr. Smith.
Yes, for staff just looking over these. So I guess that betrays my need to read through the comp plan some more. Are there any lines in looking at the, you know, attachment to, I don't see any here, but if there's additional. Are there any policies or any, any additions in the comp plan? I'm focused on for specifically pedestrian safety, walkability, you know, relative to arterials and collector streets. As well as like ADA and ensuring, you know, the area is maneuverable. For those with, you know, physical disabilities or limitations.
So bear with me for one second. I'll show you the website. I'll, I'll do a little filler as Brian's pulling up the website, which has all, I think there's five hundred and twenty-two policies. So the quick answer is yes, there are policies that address pathways, connectivity, pedestrian, safety, ADA, those types of things. We'll give you an example and it's sorted and I've already maybe bought enough time for Brian, but I believe it's chapter three in, in the comprehensive plan. There are, it's cool. And Brian, if you don't mind sharing your screen now, this is again, kind of a good tutorial. But you can sort and there's a pretty good search toolbox in, in, on the comprehensive plan. So if you go to the C's website again and look at comp plan, yep, there you go. You can filter and sort and search by different words. So I'll stop and let Brian take it from here.
So if you go, I'm reading sedata.org slash com plan. And then click on implementation. And so our entire comprehensive plan is word for word on a, in a, in a website. You don't have to download a PDF. The table itself is also searchable. So whatever hot buzzword you're looking for, you just transportation, for example. Anything with transportation, either in policy section, priority, whatever will, will show up, not priority. I don't believe we have anything specifically saying ADA. I, I believe we do have a lot of. Transportation pedestrian safety elements. Yeah, ADA is not in there, but if you look at pedestrian connectivity, safety, those things are sprinkled throughout, particularly in the transportation section. Off the top of my head, I, I couldn't tell you which ones are relevant. Do you also have a spreadsheet? You're happy to send it to anyone. It's even easier to use because you can modify as appropriate. Sort of dodged that, but I also sort of hope I answered the question.
Thank you. That's helpful.
You know, the questions, comments? Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the information and running this through the planning and zoning. It's helpful to have some of this information in front of us for certain and some of the prioritization that comes from it. Because I do remember everybody, for a while, everybody wanted to buy a bunch of dairy farms and make them into kind of museums, you know, kind of thing. And that just seemed to be this big talk around a lot of city government projects. So, and I haven't heard anything about it for quite a while. So, I mean, the reality is that, you know, a lot of mom and pops want to sell their land. And take their money and do something else or, or the kids or whatever that, that looks like. So. You know, as the city kind of changes its, its personality a little bit, it's just become less of a priority. So that's one of the things obviously that's reflected in there. So. And other things begin to take shape as far as the priority of what we want the city to look like in the future. Like pathways. Sorry, had to throw that in there. That's what you do that when you're in the catbird seat. So do appreciate that. With that, if we have no more questions, comments, there's nobody in the public to comment. I will take a motion to close the public hearing for file number H twenty twenty three dash zero zero two nine.
So moved.
Okay. And move in a second to close the public hearing for file number H twenty twenty three dash zero zero two nine for the twenty twenty three comprehensive plan policy update. All in favor, please say aye. Post name.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wheeler, go ahead.
Move, we adjourn.
Oh, we have to. No, no, no.
I think, am I wrong?
You have to say, we just, we just closed the public hearing. So that's all, that's all we've done so far.
Make a motion.
You can make a motion.
Oh.
To approve or deny.
I was already thinking that got moved. I forgot with all the stuff.
You were home already. I know.
No, I was one step ahead then. I apologize. So I'll, I'll refrain and let discussion happen if need be. Sorry about that.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Go, go right ahead. Please do. And unless there is any other discussion points which I called for, please go right ahead.
I've been helping my neighbor here. All right. After considering all staff, I begin in public testimony, I move to recommend approval of file number H dash two zero two three dash zero zero two nine. As presented in the staff report for the hearing date of July sixth, twenty twenty three with the, with no modifications.
Moved in second to approve file number H twenty twenty three dash zero zero two nine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose name. Motion passes.
Is this where I do it now?
Mr. Chair.
We'll let you make.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Motion, we adjourn.
Second. And move in second. Are we adjourned? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post name. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Chair. We do have, have an opportunity. Coming up over the next several months. So Brian's on to his next project now, and we'll see this through council and whatnot, but he's gearing up for the next.